Good afternoon, welcome to the afternoon session of Winchester City Council Planning Development Control. Afternoon session and it is Thursday the 25th of February 2pm. We will go straight into, oh no, before we do that, we need to check who's here. So I will ask Dave Shaw, the Senior Democratic Services Officer, to do a roll of members present today. And also to tell us which officers are present. My name is councillor Theresa Evans and I am the Chair of the Planning Committee. So Dave, roll call of members.
Yes, thank you Chair and good afternoon members. First of all councillor Clea.
Good afternoon, present.
Thank you councillor Evans.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Good afternoon, yes, I'm present.
Councillor Leaming.
Good afternoon, I'm present.
Thank you councillor McLean.
Present.
Councillor Reed.
Present.
Councillor Ruffell.
Present.
And councillor Bentote.
Yeah, present.
And the officers in attendance for this afternoon are Julie Pinnock, Service Lead Built Environment, Catherine Knight, Service Lead for Legal, and the Planning Case Officers for Item 11 Lion Hill House is Sarah Toes, Item 12 Long Ash, Charlotte Fleming, and Item 13 The Tree Preservation Order at Coomfolly, John Bartlett and Ivan Gerdler. I'm David Shaw from Democratic Services and I'm joined this afternoon by Claire Buchanan and Nancy Graham also from Democratic Services. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, so we're going to start with the first application on our agenda, Agenda Item 11. This is SDNP/20/03665/4. It's a new single-storey dwelling at Lion Hill House, Alton Road, West Meeon. And as we've heard, the case officer is Sarah Toes. And I see Sarah, you've got your presentation up on the screen, good afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
And when you're ready, we'll go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, thank you Chair. So the application site lies to the rear of Lion Hill House, which is a greyed, listed dwelling that was formerly the Red Lion Pub. So the site comprises the garden of the pub and the car park of the former pub. So here's the Lion Hill House outlined in blue, the site outlined in red. So the site lies in a corner position where the A32 meets Church Lane in West Meeon Village. And it's located within the settlement boundary, the conservation area and the South Downs National Park. So access to the site is via an access track that runs along the north side of Lion Hill House. Here in between Lion Hill House Annex and Sycamore Cottage. And as neighbouring properties to the north is Sycamore Cottage and Benham's Cottage, to the west Harts Meeon. So I'm just trying to move on. Okay, this is an aerial photograph showing the site, which you can see by the gold star here. So it's predominantly hard standing and also consists of part of this area here, which is to the rear of Lion Hill House. There's a public footpath that runs to the north side of Benham Cottage. And here from east to west, from Church Lane to the churchyard, churchyard to the northwest here. This shows the existing site plan. So this is Lion Hill House to the east, the Sycamore Cottage there, Harts Meeon to the west. This building here used to be an outbuilding for Sycamore Cottage, but it's since been demolished, which has enabled the site area to be increased. So the proposal is for a single-storey dwelling, which is located mainly to the north of the site, with the southern area garden. So there's different elements to the proposal. You've got the main building, which runs on an east-to-west axis at the north. And then there's the bedroom elements to the south. And it steps down, the height of the dwelling and the garden steps down to account of the ground levels. This is a closer view of the proposed ground floor plan. So the main living accommodation is at the north and then two bedrooms to the south. Also parking is provided, two parking spaces here is for the two-bedroom dwelling. And then there's part three spaces are proposed for the existing Lion Hill House and Annex alongside the access track. This is the proposed roof plan. So the northern element is a pitched roof with Beelit's windows and solar panels along this stretch here. And then the southern parts of the dwelling are single-storey and they're proposed as green cedum roofs with roof lights. These are the elevations, so the top elevation is the east, which is what you will see from the A32 or partially. You can see the different elements here, there's a pitched roof element to the right. And then the single-storey, the flat-roofed elements here on to the left. This is Harts Meeon at the rear, which is the neighbouring property. And this is the boundary wall between the two properties. And then the bottom elevation is from the west. And this is the north elevation. So this is the pitched roof again, you can see the roof lights there. And then the southern elevation here would be what you'd see from within the garden, looking up at the site with Harts Meeon on the left. These are a couple of sections taken through the site. So this is Harts Meeon on the left-hand side there and this is a section through. So you can see the level changes within the dwelling, taking account of the ground levels sloping down. And then this section, lower section is taken, is a look-through from the south in the garden. This is the west elevation, which shows the existing boundary wall of Harts Meeon. So this is what they would see above that. And these images have been taken from the design and access statement submitted with the application, which just gives you an idea of what it will look like. The materials have been changed since the submission was originally submitted. So originally it was proposed with blackened timber cladding for most of the elevations and the roof. But these have since been changed to a light to mid-brown cladding with a slate roof. The site benefits from an existing planning permission for a single-storey dwelling also. And so this is, which was allowed on appeal. So this is the site plan that was allowed at appeal. So you can see it's smaller because the outbuilding of Sycamore Cottage is still here. So the site area is smaller and also all of the parking is proposed along this area here, rather than some of it being along the access track. So the dwelling that's allowed in the appeal scheme is smaller and it's positioned on a north-south axis. And then this is just the east elevation of the appeal scheme. So you can see that it's similar in its form with the pitched roof element and then the single-storey, the flat-roofed elements there. And the bottom is, the bottom image is the street scene. So this is what you would see through the gap in between the two buildings down the access track. So moving on to the photographs, this is the Lion Hill House on the left and Sycamore Cottage on the right. This is the access track through. You can see Harts Meeon at the back there with its roof lights. So this is where you would have views of the new dwelling. This is just a closer view down the side access. And this is looking west across the site, you can see the former car park hard standing there and Harts Meeon at the back. That's just another closer view. And this is looking northwest across the site. So this area here is the bit, extra bit that have been, the owners have bought on the neighbouring property to extend the site area. And beyond this tree here is the churchyard. This is a view looking south, so this is the area to the rear of Lion Hill House's garden. With, this is the boundary wall with Harts Meeon on the right. This is just a view looking north. This upper section here, that's actually the garden of Sycamore Cottage, the neighbouring property. So the boundary of the site is this wall. And this is looking towards Sycamore Cottage and Benham's Cottage, towards the access. And this is a view looking, looking west, sorry, looking east and towards the access, the A32. So this has been taken from the public footpath to the north of the site. The roof here, that's Harts Meeon, the neighbouring property. So this is where you might, you'll get glimpse views of the roof of the new dwelling. And this has been taken from the design and access statement. So you can see they've superimposed an image there of how much of the roof that you would like to see. And this was taken from the churchyard, Harts Meeon there on the right. And this just shows what you would see, this is taken from the design and access statement again. So this just shows what you would see looking through the existing access. So you'd see the single-storey, the flat-roofed element of the building mainly through the access. So to summarise, the application is for a new contemporary, single-storey dwelling. And the recommendation is to approve, thank you.
Thank you very much there. We have no public speakers at all. It was referred to committee by the parish council. But we don't have a parish council representative here to talk to us today. Could I just make a gentle reminder that if a parish council refers something to committee and it's the only reason that we're all sat here looking at it today, it is nice for the committee to hear from the parish council. Of course, there might be reasons that people are detained at work or they might be ill, which is why we don't have a representative and we understand that. But if that could be generally borne in mind, that would be great. So we will go straight in then to members' questions on the report. And the report does start on page 80, talks about the appeal summary and the revised application, which is what we're looking at today. So do ask questions on that if you wish. But also principle of development and the next heading citing scale, design and impact on the character and appearance of the conservation officer, which goes, not officer, area, sorry, I'm just reading the next line, which goes down to page 82. Could I just ask a question, Sarah, about the boundary treatment of the garden? I wasn't too clear what the treatment would be that would designate the garden, which is below the bedrooms, is it? Or next?
The site plan, so. It's okay? And sorry Chair, I was just getting the site plans back to have a look at. And so the, so the boundary treatment, I mean, it's already, it's already fencing at the moment. This is the garden to Lion Hill House. So that will remain the same. And then this, the west elevation, sorry, the west boundary is the brick wall with Harts Meeon. And so I believe that the new boundary treatment will be an hedging.
Right.
Which is shown on here, but we have included that in the landscaping condition. So we'll be receiving details of that prior to occupation.
And the parking arrangement has changed as well, hasn't it, from that?
Yeah, oh sorry, that was, yeah, that was the old one, yeah. Yeah, so, so the scheme, the plan that we just showed was the appeal scheme, which is the extant permission that they can build. That had all of the five spaces, so two spaces for the new dwelling, three spaces for the existing property, had it all in one row down here. So this, with this scheme, they've split it. So the two spaces here of the new property and then the three spaces along the access track here, that's for Lion Hill House. And yes, you can see the boundary treatments along here are shown as hedging.
Right, so the curved bit, that's hedging, is it up next to the spaces for this new dwelling? Where it curves around, that's all hedging?
This bit. Is that, you mean this curved section, yeah, I believe so. And we would want to see that as kind of a soft edge anyway, because you'll be, that would be subject to more views coming, looking in from the access.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Yes, councillor Ruffell and councillor McLean, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Sarah, the wall between Harts Meeon and the new build, does that belong to Harts Meeon or this build?
That's Harts Meeon's boundary wall.
Right, it's three metres high, you say? And it's going to be increased to 4.5 metres high. Any strengthening done to that? Because you can't just put a metre on top of the wall that's built for three metres.
No, sorry, I think that was an error, I think that was an error, I think, in my report. Because that came from one of the neighbours' comments. And, but it wasn't actually, the increase in the distance was actually how far away the new building is going to be from the wall.
It's not increasing on height?
No, no, sorry, that was, sorry, that was misleading, I apologise. Now, the existing permission, I believe, is about two metres from the boundary wall.
Yeah, I'm not bothered about that, I was just worried about the height. Because if you put something another metre high, you've got to do something with the foundations.
No, that, yeah, no, the wall is remaining as is at the moment.
That's fine, thank you.
And it's quite a nice wall, isn't it, as well? Councillor McLean?
Thank you Chair. If we just initially refresh my memory, I'm sure this is a site that a number of the current planning committee did a site visit on?
Yeah, that's correct.
Say again?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's the first part of it. The second, the wall that is, councillor Ruffell was just talking about, is that a historical wall or is it a modern wall?
It's a brick and flint wall, it's, I don't, it doesn't look modern, it's not listed, I don't believe. But, but yeah, it looks like a historic wall, if you look in the photographs, yeah. I'm not sure of the age, but it's a brick and flint.
Okay.
Wall, yeah, you can see there in the photograph.
Yeah, no, thanks for that.
Well, that was the wall of the pub car park, wasn't it? It's quite a big car park. Any more questions?
Yeah, we have councillor Leaming Chair.
Councillor Leaming?
Thank you, yeah, we did visit this some time ago, I remember it quite well. The thing that worries me on this is the parking. If you look at the picture on page 110. See, actual photograph, Sarah. It shows the cars parked. And then I'd like to come back to that.
Sorry, that's my mistake.
It looks very, very narrow where they come through. I wonder if there's sufficient parking space there, I'm sure you've checked it. But also, it seems to be very tight for actually allowing the cars to turn around, to come out of that entrance in a forward motion. Because that's quite a dangerous corner round there from what I remember. So I'd like to sort of have your views on that, please.
Yeah, well, we've, the Highway Authority have assessed the scheme and they didn't raise any concerns. And I've driven past, I drove past there myself and there is space to drive when the cars are parked there, like you can see now, that was taken on my site visit. So there is space to drive and pass the cars when they're parked there. If, we have a, get to the site plan please, do you think? And then the site plan here, it's got, shows the turning at the end of the, turning at the end here by the property. So it felt, it felt there was sufficient space to be able to manoeuvre the vehicles and then exit in a forward gear.
Because as part of that, and head type of end is car parking spaces, that's what gave me the concern.
Councillor Leaming, when I, when I went to the site, there were cars parked on the right-hand side, as there is in, there are in the picture that you referred us to. And I turned around at the end, I mean, the property hasn't been built yet, but it is quite, it was a car park. There is quite a lot of space there. And I managed to come out of the application site onto the A32. It's quite good visibility from traffic going south, not so much obviously with traffic coming round that northward. I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Vice Chair?
Councillor Reed, thank you Chair.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you Chair, I didn't realise we'd moved on to page 83, is that correct?
Um, no, wait a minute, we were, no, we haven't moved on to that.
Oh, sorry, because parking came up, so, oh, I wanted to come in at page 83 then.
I don't like to say to councillors, we're not on that page.
Okay, I'll wait for it.
So we now, in, any more questions on the pages that we are on? Which is page 81 and down to almost the bottom of 82, Vice Chair?
No, we just have councillor McLean, but that's to do with parking again, Chair.
Okay, so let's move on then to the landscape character of South Downs National Park, page 82. Dark night skies, the highways, ecosystems of the city, ecology. Off of page 82, page 83. Councillor Reed, did you have a question?
Yes Chair, the, under the dark skies on the third line, condition eight deals with the roof lights, of which there are quite a number of roof lights. But there seems to be no condition on the rest of the glazing, which is around the property itself, which may shine like a beacon if all the lights are on, literally in the centre of the village. Because number nine doesn't deal with it. It's, I just can't see a condition with regard to the blinds etcetera for normal windows, full glazed windows. And my second point, if I may, Chairman, a little bit like councillor Leaming's, was regarding the photograph on page 109 showing the three cars on the slip road there. It is quite dangerous and I think you just answered the question that you came out of there reasonably well. There have been a series of accidents in this very spot. The Red Lion was a public house, which I used to frequent. And the reason it closed basically was the number of accidents that went into the pub itself. So it's concern on that parking spaces there and the lighting.
Sarah?
Yeah, thank you. And so first of all, with regards to the dark night skies and concern, the reason, the main concern with the light pollution to dark night skies and protecting that is the upward light spill. So that's why the condition has only been applied to the roof lights. I appreciate that there is a lot of glazing on the elevations, but when you look at other properties in the area, like Lion Hill House there, there's lots of windows. And so it's not, it's not considered as harmful, the impact of the outward light spill from internal lighting. Particularly given the location, it's within the centre of the village. It's quite well contained with other buildings. So we would, we would put that condition on for, if it was in a more, like, to protect the landscape, it was in a more open countryside location. But in this context, in the kind of, in the middle of the settlement, it didn't feel that it was necessary. So we just felt that it would be more, it's important to control that upward light spill. So that's why it was put on just for the roof lights. And, and then the other question with regards to the access. There is obviously an extant permission and the, it was granted, allowed it to peel for the additional use of that access. So was your concern about the intensification of use of the access or about the parking? Sorry, I can't remember exactly what you said now.
The, it is proposed that the, there will be now official parking bays in that location. Whilst these are not official, that we see on page 109, it can cause a little problem. I was just concerned about that junction with Church Lane and the A2, A32. It is a dangerous bend, very dangerous.
Now, I think we feel satisfied that all vehicles will exit, be able to exit in a forward gear. And then obviously the visibility coming out of the access is acceptable. So there wasn't, there wasn't a highway concern for that reason.
Thank you.
Any more, Vice Chair, on those issues?
Yes Chair, councillor McLean.
Oh councillor McLean.
Thank you Chair, can we go to the map on page 100? There we go. Now, that's, is that 100 or 101? That's 101, isn't it? It's one with the parking diagram on it, which I've got as page 100. That will do, that'll do nicely. If we go to the two bays that are tied into the proposed development, that, if there's two cars parked in that, would stop anybody of the other ones that are parked down the hill, using it as a turning area. So how would those vehicles, those, you know, the ones above it up here, how would they be, how would they turn round if those two parking bays were full? Has that been looked at and have we had any sort of splay diagram done on it? Thank you.
Sarah?
No, we haven't had any, we haven't had any splay diagrams submitted for this.
Because taking up councillor Leaming's point as well, if you can't turn round by driving in and then backing out of there or driving in, backing out and turning round, you're, you're going to have to go out onto the main road backwards, which I think was councillor Reed's point. That was my only real concern on this one, is that turning area.
Chairman, if I might, Julie Pinnock here. I think, I understand the point, you know, entirely that councillor McLean is raising, but I think you'd better park in these two and if they're both occupied and someone drove up here, they'd better pull in, sort of, you know, up to the back of those and reverse here and then pull down in a forward gear. Or pull up to here first and then back here and then come round this way. So we haven't got a threat path analysis, but I'm quite confident that there's enough space there. You might not do it in two, you know, depending on your size of your car and your driving skills. But I'm confident that there's room to go in there and turn and manoeuvre still, even if these two spaces and these three along here are occupied, Chair.
I still have a concern, Mrs Pinnock, thank you, I still have a concern there that there is not enough room. If we just look at the bit from the end of the staggered line in where the two cars are parked. If they're both full, say with, like, there's a pickup truck in there, if there's a pickup truck and one other, nothing is going to swing around if there was a car parked as one of the three, just not going to happen. I certainly couldn't do it.
I think Chairman, I think, yeah, I think, you know, I appreciate that and I do think, and take the point about the size of vehicles. I think you, from a highway perspective, the Highway Authority is satisfied that there's room to turn and manoeuvre there and go out in a forward gear, otherwise they could have raised an objection Chair. I think you, from a highway perspective, the Highway Authority is satisfied that there's room to turn and manoeuvre there and go out in a forward gear, otherwise they could have raised an objection, Chair. So I think in, particularly bearing in mind that we've already got a permission here, I think it would be hard to resist it on that basis, Chair.
Thank you. Um, Vice Chair, any more on the?
Yeah, one more, uh, just come in Chair, councillor Bento.
Councillor Bento?
Yes, not really the question, I think I've more or less answered my question now, looking at this diagram that's on here, because I haven't, I haven't seen a a layout of the, of the building until, until this one came on the screen. Because I was, it's a very interesting design. And I was just wondering where everything was in, in, in the building, I can now see the bedrooms and the morsel bathrooms and other rooms marked, so I think my question's been asked. I'll just point out that on the hack, uh, exit from, from there, it isn't directly onto the A thirty two, it is not directly onto the Church Lane, or was it Church Road? It, it exits there rather than directly onto the A thirty two, but it is a it is a busy corner.
Uh, that's, yeah, you can see the lines of the A thirty two and it comes out onto, so you can pull out and you can see what's coming towards you, it's traffic coming northwards that you know, but you're, you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, shall we move on?
No more Chair.
All right, sorry.
No more, sorry Chair, no more.
I thought you said one more. Um, right, page eighty four then, we're looking at local residential amenity. Drainage, sustainable construction, and nitrate neutrality and anything else anyone wants to raise.
No Chair, no questions.
I believe the two nearest neighbours have not objected to the scheme. Um, Hart Smith and I've forgotten the name of the other one, but the one that's right next door, uh, Sycamore Cottage. So, um, there being no more questions, debate.
May I kick off Chair?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Um, I have been out, I've had a look at it, and yes, that corner is busy, but it's, you can sort it out, I think. But may I say that the plot to my mind is sufficiently large enough to accommodate this proposal, and if anything, it will enhance the site. Um, and I really don't feel that it would result in any harm to the character or appearance to the area. Um, so I will be supporting this Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Any more contributions?
Vice Chair, I have councillor Gordon Smith and councillor Reed.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, I think it's, uh, if you look at the existing photographs of this rather dire space at the back of, of the pub, or what was the pub. Uh, it's a pretty imaginative design, and I think it's, uh, it's obviously using different materials. But if you look at the view, the proposed view looking down and you see the, um, the coloured photograph of it, uh, the image. Um, it's, it, it looks, it's, I think it's quite sympathetic to the, to this other buildings in the area and works rather well, and I think I'm, I'm, we would be happy to support it. If you look at the image taken from the design and access statement, uh, I think it's a great improvement, it's imaginative use of a site. Um, I think it's got a lot going for it.
Thank you. Councillor Reed?
Thank you Chairman, I think the two people before me have already said more or less what I was going to say. It is a lovely styled building, much more interesting than the appeal. The one that was one on appeal. Um, so yeah, I, I, I'm fully supportive of it. My only concern is that we get the dark sky issue correct. Because if those plate glass windows, which are huge, um, it'll be just like a torch being straight up into the sky. But yes, I'm fully supportive of it.
Thank you. Yes, I, I too will be supporting, um, this application. Um, the, once the, the pub closed, there was just this vast car park space, pub car park space. And I think it's been quite cleverly designed really, because they've taken what the appeal inspector allowed, which was a single story, and they've sort of taken it across. And, um, I understand the, the slight worry over cars turning round, but I think they'll, will sort it out. I do think, having been, actually I drove into the former car park, that I think there will be enough room. Um, and the, the view that you have from the A thirty two will be, there will be a view, but a minimal one. And the view from the churchyard will be minimal because they dug it down in as well. And the fact that the, the two nearest neighbours are, um, not, um, objecting to the scheme or supportive of the scheme. Um, I, I, I think it will, it'll be interesting to go and see this, um, if we approve it. Um, on one of our coach trips when it's finished, just to see how it fits in. Um, so, um, anyway, I should too be supporting the application. Um, have we come to the end of debate?
No, Chair, we have councillor McLean, thank you.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you Chair. Yes, I also will be, um, supporting the application. The only concern I do have, looking at the appeal scheme parking layout and the parking layout that we're looking to approve. Um, I, I'm still not happy with that, but um, I think if that's all, but you know, that's the only thing I can find wrong with it, I think it's reasonable to support the application, thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you councillor McLean. Vice Chair, is that it?
That's it, thank you Chair.
So, um, this application has been recommended for approval. The conditions are on page eighty five to eighty nine and the informative's eighty nine to ninety one. Um, and it's a very full, um, report. Um, and I'll pass over to Dave Shaw to do the roll call of members, um, as to how they wish to vote.
Yes, thank you Chair. Councillor Clear?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith? Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Leaming?
Four.
Councillor McLean?
Four.
Councillor Reed? Councillor Raphael?
Four.
And councillor Bento?
Yep, four.
Okay, that's all eight members Chair.
Thank you very much. So that application is approved. We move now on to our next business item, which is agenda item twelve. SDMP slash twenty slash oh four two two one slash house. It's at Long Ash Pitcot Lane, Ozzelbury. And it's ground floor and first floor rear extension. The case officer is Charlotte Fleming, good afternoon Charlotte. Are we too soon for, um, Charlotte?
Yes Chair, if you could just give us one minute Chair while we swap the over, apologies.
Chair, just to tell you that we've let Mr John Foster and our Boas into the, into the meeting as the members of next items, thank you.
They're both here, are they?
Yes, they are, yes.
Sorry about that, I should have checked that Charlotte was ready. And we might be slightly ahead of ourselves. Once again, if you are listening, um, at, um, at home or wherever, um, we are about to carry on with, uh, agenda item twelve. I think I see the presentation on the screen. Long Ash in Ozzelbury. And the case officer is Charlotte Fleming. And I think we're nearly ready to carry on with the presentation for this item.
Okay. Afternoon Committee, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Charlotte. Um, this application is for the erection of a ground floor and first floor rear extension at Long Ash in Ozzelbury. The site is in, within the village of Ozzelbury, a settlement in the South Downs National Park. Um, the site has immediate ownership here, or like curtsils here, and wider ownership of this field down here. Um, the property is here, you've got, um, Downlands House to the north and Pitcot House to the south. There is a garage to the property and driveway here, and there's an annex which was granted permission in twenty eighteen, and it's also where the grandparents of the people in the property live. Um, this is also called, um, Farm Goff, um, Farmview Cottage, I think it is. There's a public footpath to the south, which is predominantly screened by vegetation. Um, and I think that's it for the aerial. Um, Long Ash is a large replacement property built in or permitted in twenty fifteen under the old local plan policies. The application proposes to extend the ground floor by approximately three point five percent, three point five metres, you can see here. And at first floor, the extension is over the existing balcony, so there's another blue line here. Um, creating a new balcony over the ground, the new ground floor extension. So this is the rear of the property at the moment, so there's an existing balcony which was permitted in twenty eighteen, with screening up to both sides, so you've got Downlands up here, and this is the access drive and the main curtsy to the garden, and the garage and annex are down to the right of the picture. Um, so this is a view of the property from the annex. So you've got Pitcot House, the house to the, in white on the left of the photo, and Downlands on the right, and this is the garage in front. Um, and this is a view from Farmview Cottage, or the annex. So this is a view from the existing, um, property with the balcony, approved balcony and side screening which is being um, kept and relocated under the new extension. Um, it's already set forward of the neighbouring properties here, and here is Pitcot House as well. So the building line's already set in front of the existing properties, so looking out beyond their immediate house and garden. And this is a view into the site, so the house is just on the right and sort of across the site with the immediate garden and wider ownership down here with the garage and the annex here. This is the views to the house from the public footpath, so to the south of the site. Um, it's basically a farm track, um, and there's one glimpse to view to the property here, which is about where that lorry is in the photo up here, but other than that, walking all the way down, you couldn't see the house at all. Further down, when you, when the path changes, there's a hedgerow to the east of the property. So this is the existing and proposed floor plans. Um, at ground floor, they're going to make a bigger playroom, um, so they're extending by about three point five metres. Um, and at first floor, they're extending the bedroom by three point five metres over the existing ground floor bit here. Um, and then going to put a new balcony and moving the existing side screening over the ground floor extension here. So then at first floor, there's going to be a flat roof. So it's just making the bedrooms bigger and, um, making the ground floor a bit bigger for a playroom for their children. Um, this is a side elevation, so there's no windows proposed on the side at all. And this, this is existing with screening up, and they're just coming along and putting the screening further along, so it's two metre high screening and they're happy to reuse it. Um, and this is the rear of the property, so this is the existing at the bottom of the page. And this is a proposed, um, in the blue and grey. So I've put a condition on about the glazing, um, because it's looking out over the national park. Um, and I've also recommended a condition about the side panels being maintained at all times. Um, this is again a view further up the garden, onto the existing. So it's not going to change much, it's just being pulled out slightly, about three point five metres further. Um, I think this concludes my presentation for the rear extension to Long Ash, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we do have public speakers for this, um, application. And the first one is Mr John Foster, who is an objector to the application. Good afternoon, Mr Foster.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Um, and so when you start speaking, you have three minutes. When you start speaking, the clock will appear. And, um, if you are still speaking at the end of three minutes, I'm afraid I'll have to stop you, but you may finish your sentence.
Okay, thank you. My name is John Foster, I've lived in, at Downlands next to, door to Long Ash for twenty years. Uh, I'd like to make three brief points. Firstly, since twenty fourteen, we've lived with developments of this site. This has impacted on us significantly, both in eight planning applications of one appeal and the building works more or less every year. Since twenty fourteen, uh, more or less every year since twenty fourteen, when will this level of development end? Secondly, we're concerned about privacy. Our comments in the public consultation of October twenty showed our concern that a balcony, if added to the first floor flat roof, would affect our privacy. In the resubmission in November twenty, uh, the balcony was added to the flat roof. So our concerns about privacy remain, uh, as we expressed in our submitted comments. Finally, if the proposal goes ahead, the living area of the main house will be larger by twelve percent than that of the original developer's application in twenty fourteen. That application was rejected and the planning appeal dismissed for reasons of size. In addition, if the proposal goes ahead, it will result in the living area of the main house being twenty nine percent bigger than the house as built by the developer. I'll be happy to clarify any points and thanks for your time and the opportunity to participate.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, there might be questions from the committee. Um, I, I, I would like to start, um, and you mentioned the new balcony. Um, and the current balcony presumably overlooks your part of your garden, but this, the new balcony will be further away, or what, what will it overlook?
So, um, when the, when the previous, uh, we, we, we were friends with the previous neighbour for sixteen, fifteen years till she died, uh, the bungalow didn't overlook our site and, uh, we used the, the bottom of the garden, we built her, we built all of our, um, hard paving, um, prior to the new house. Uh, we didn't object to the balcony, uh, in its first iteration. But it's remarkable how close we are and, um, uh, it's all, you know, it feels like touching distance sometimes. And this would, this is a, a well-used area of our garden and, uh, we use it for hours on end in the summertime. And this balcony would come another three and a half metres closer. Which, um, is, I mean, if you look at the photo, you can see, um, that, that effect. So that's, that's the nature of, uh, the issue for us.
Um, could, could you just remind me, Mr Foster, which property you live in?
Um, so it's Downlands to the north side.
Yes.
And if you see the large, the large oval cream coloured object, that's a patio which we use.
Okay, yes, we've got them up here, so I've seen them, didn't quite hear if you mentioned it before. Vice Chair, any more questions for, um, Mr Foster?
Yes Chair, councillor McLean and councillor Raphael.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you Chair, um, just a very, a very short question if I may. Has your, uh, neighbour had any discussions with you about what they're planning to do, and have you been able to put your views to your neighbour? Thank you.
No, we just were made aware of the planning application. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Raphael?
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Mr Foster. When you moved into your current house, your next door neighbour, which we're discussing now, what size of the bungalow was it?
It was Pearl's house was... Would be classified as a small dwelling at this stage of planning. My understanding of SDNP guidance.
Would you classify that your next door neighbour's house is large, extra-large or overdevelopment?
Well, I think it's large for the stock in the lane.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions for Mr Foster? Vice Chair?
Sorry, Chair. No, no more, Chair.
No. Thank you very much, Mr Foster, for coming along. And do stay in the meeting. But if you could just take your camera off now. Thank you as well. Thank you very much. So next public speaker is the parish council representative councillor Paul Bowes. Not sure how you say your name.
I say thank you for saying Bowes.
Bowes. So, Mr Bowes, you have three minutes. When you start speaking, the clock will come on screen. I'll have to stop you after three minutes, but you may of course finish your sentence. Do you want to put your camera on?
Thank you, yes. It should be on.
Yep, yeah, we can see and hear you now. So when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Bowes and I'm a member of the Ozzelbury Parish Council. I've been asked to represent the council on this occasion. I hope that you and everyone you know are safe and well. Long Ash is a property in the South Downs National Park on Pittcot Lane, a narrow unadopted country lane. The property used to comprise a single-storey small bungalow, garden, adjoining light industrial buildings with agricultural land. Ozzelbury Parish Council opposes the current planning application on the following grounds. This dwelling has now been overextended. It is not in keeping with this part of the national park. It is simply too big and overbearing. Since 2015, there have been six planning applications here indicating overdevelopment. The national park generally seeks modest proposals, which this is not. Section 791 of its local plan refers. If similar further extensions become the norm, this would make properties here even less affordable to local families, could prevent young families coming to live in our village, threatening the survival of our very successful primary school. There is a fear, where this permission granted, it might be interpreted loosely. Further, what next development might this obviously creative household propose? A little more detail. New Long Ash, Mr Stoneman purchased the bungalow, extended the house and applied for planning to demolish both the extension and build a new three-storey house. Permission 2014/2567. This was turned down as being too large and extensive. An appeal to the Secretary of State failed. 2015/3445. Resubmission did permit a smaller building and included clause three stating, 'Development shall be completed only in accordance with the reptile survey and mitigation report, September 2015', etc. 'The mitigation shall be implemented, retained and managed in accordance with these details and the habitat management strategy contained therein. Reason: to protect reptiles from any harm that might arise during the development work with no net loss of local reptile status.' In 2020, an enforcement officer visited the site, confirming as unacceptable the replacement of the designated reptile habitat by a garden and play area. 'Steps must be taken to ensure the breach is rectified.' Apparently, this has yet to take place. Since 2018, Mr Churchill has added, 2018/4776, a kitchen and balcony extension, apparently completed on the same day as the planning permission was granted. 2018, permitted change of use to domestic annex associated with the existing house, single-storey structure. A two-storey house was built, we don't think it's an annex. After completion, 2019/3770, retrospective permission was granted for this house, now named Farm View Cottage, without any reference to Long Ash. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's a question for you from the members of the committee.
Yep.
Yes, Chair, councillor Raphael.
Councillor Raphael.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Mr Bowes.
Good afternoon.
You mentioned that a planning application, 2560, was turned down because it was too large. Was that building, in your opinion, as big or smaller than one that's up for application now?
It was 2567 and I believe it was slightly smaller than that which is now proposed.
Thank you. And you said about litigation for reptiles. In 2020, an enforcement officer visited the site. Has that been rectified?
So far as we can ascertain, no.
I was just going to say that I presume that's being pursued by enforcement. It's not relevant to our application today, but we hear what you're saying. Vice Chair?
No more, Chair. No more, Chair. Thank you.
I shall turn off my microphone and camera.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you for coming along today and contributing information. Anything that you want to update us on, Charlotte, having listened to the speakers?
Yes, please. So regarding all the planning history, all bar one of the six applications was approved under the old local planning and old Winchester plans. So the 2014 application and 15 application for the replacement of the bungalow into a large dwelling house was under old local planning policies. So since the local plan was adopted in July 2019, the only application we've had was the alteration to the annex, which had already had approval. The retrospective alteration to the annex. And in terms of policy, we would see the house as a large dwelling. So the part of the policy is to protect small and medium dwellings. So it now reads as a large dwelling is the approach we're taking.
Yeah. I understand. Probably difficult for members of the public to understand.
No, I understand, but...
Thank you. So let's, councillors, let's move to our report. And it starts on page 127. And so shall we look at principle of development, which starts on 127 and goes on to the next page, and design scale and impact on the character of the area?
No questions, Chair?
Could you just... It's actually quite difficult to follow the history of these enlargements. The parish council representative councillor Bowes said that there had been six applications in recent history. Is that correct? Charlotte?
Sorry, I was getting unmuted. Yes, it has been... So there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. There's, I've got seven on the planning history. One has been, one and this one, since the local plan's been adopted. Everything else was prior to July 2019.
And what sort of puzzles me or troubles me a little is the South Downs 31, SD 31. Because it was a small dwelling. But the fact that it's not a small dwelling is Winchester's fault or permission. Stroke permission, is that right?
Yes, I believe it was... I don't know the old planning policies very well, but I believe it was under the old Winchester planning policies. I believe the previous owner, two owners ago of the property, applied to replace the bungalow, got refused. They did a lawful development certificate to extend the property, made it a large property. And then they could then replace it with an even larger property. I think that's how they worked around historic planning policies.
So it's gone from a 130 square metre, three-bed bungalow to now...
Three-bed, yeah.
Potentially a 443 square metre large house.
Yes.
Very well, right, okay. And then the balcony, when was that?
So I believe there was a balcony permitted with the original application, partially. And then in 2018, the rest of the balcony was permitted. That was under old policy. That was permitted in November 2018.
Okay, thank you. Complicated history.
It is.
Vice Chair, any questions on those?
No questions, Chair, no.
So shall we move on to page 128 and 129? So this is impact nature and others, including the dark night sky, ecology and biodiversity. Could I start while people put the register if they want to speak? Charlotte, you said something about side panels. Were you referring to the...
Sorry, you broke up there, I didn't quite catch that.
I didn't quite hear what you said. And I thought you were referring to the balcony. You said something about, oh, there it is, the side panels. Two metre high privacy side panels from... Oh, I see. Moving from the old balcony to the proposed new one. Got it?
Yes.
And would it be appropriate then to address the ecology issues which the parish council have brought up?
We have councillor Leeming, Chair.
Yes, I've just asked a question which I quite like answered.
Who are you wanting answering, Chair? Sorry. Was that myself?
It was, yeah. Do we have any conditions on the...
So in ecology terms, the whole house has been redeveloped. And where they want to extend, there's existing like large patio paving slab. So there's unlikely to be, and the whole garden's been landscaped. So there's unlikely to be any ecology up at this end of the site. I've put a condition on for the biodiversity enhancement methods they've proposed. But I haven't conditioned any reptile reports or anything at the top end of the site where the new build is. Because it's all been rebuilt very recently. So there's unlikely to be reptiles and animals at that end. But I've put an informative on saying that about protected species, saying if they're found, work must stop and a licence must be obtained.
And the issue over the reptiles from a former application?
I don't know about that one. I think that's possibly with enforcement. I don't know.
Sorry, Vice Chair, a mister councillor Leeming wanted to speak.
Yes, correct, Chair. Yes, Chair, you covered some of what I was going to ask. We do need to keep a very close eye on this one, I think, because they've shown that they're not particularly into looking after the reptiles. And if we allow them to build over the patio, the next thing will be, will they be wanting to increase, put a new patio in? But my question really is to legal, that if they're not conforming to the previous planning requirements, are we entitled to actually grant this one, this planning application now? Because it seems to me that we're just letting them rolling over.
Okay, you need to, councillor Leeming, through the chair, if I may. You need to consider the material planning considerations before you today. And whether or not enforcement has or hasn't taken place is not a material planning consideration. So, no.
The question that I was really coming up with, Catherine, was the fact that if they're not proving to abide by planning consent, how can we put in planning consent on this one and expect them to conform?
Councillor, again, that isn't actually a material planning consideration. So that's an enforcement matter as to whether or not the conditions are being complied with. I'm not actually able to comment on that. What you need to consider is actually the material planning and that is not a material planning consideration. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I think the answer in short is no. Could I just go back and just interrupt in case anybody else wants to? Charlotte, you say on page 129, under impact on neighbours, that there will not be any overlooking of Downlands. That's not the opinion of Mr Foster who lives there.
I don't believe the overlooking will be any more significant than the existing. Ordinary with overlooking, it's more to the immediate rear of the property. And the side panels, so it's angling the view straight down, it's not sort of looking into the neighbour's garden.
So what are the side panels made of?
I believe they're sort of black mesh or, I'm not entirely sure, off the top of my head.
What height are they?
Pardon?
What height are they?
They're two metres high. They're on the focus of the existing, so they're going to use the existing ones and bring them forward. So they are on a photo on the report.
Yeah, it's difficult to gauge a height. Thank you. Vice Chair, any more contributors, any more questions on the report?
Chair, I just wondered, could I possibly ask, if it's allowed?
Yes, I'm sure it is.
Is there a possibility to maybe remove permitted development rights somewhere along the line?
I did ask them. I won't answer it for the officers. The answer is no, anyway, but...
I was going to say we can, but I don't know how much more we can really remove. I don't think it's worth removing the permitted development rights. And I think Julie wants to jump in.
Mrs Pinnock? You can't remove permitted development rights, Chair, at this stage on a household application. It was when the dwelling was being built, we would have had to have considered that. And you can only do that if you really believe that, you know, normally it's on a tight plot. Historically, when we've had small units. Otherwise, the national guidance is that you shouldn't seek to remove someone's permitted development rights without good justification, Chair. And I don't, you know, at this stage on this current application, that wouldn't be reasonable, tests.
Thank you, Mrs Pinnock, appreciated.
Any more questions, Vice Chair?
Thank you.
No, Chair, no, Chair.
So we're now into debate.
Councillor, oh no, sorry, not yet, Chair, no.
Well, I'll start then, in the absence of anyone else wanting to say. I really regret the way that we've allowed all these extensions to happen. I think really it's a case of the horses now bolted. Because they've, all these additions and extensions have been approved mostly under Winchester City Council terms before the South Downs National Park took over. But the South Downs National Park has also approved the latest application. I feel very sorry for the neighbours who originally used to live next door to a very small bungalow. And now they live next door to a large house, a very large house, and with balcony and constant building going on. I would like to hope that this is the end of all the building. I would like to refuse this application, but I just don't feel that there is any reason to do so. Except that it's somehow been allowed by incremental creep to turn in from a modest bungalow to this enormously large house. And because of that, we can't use SD 31 because it's no longer a small property in the national park. So that's my view. I don't know if anyone else wants to join me in debate?
Yes, councillor Evans, councillor Gordon Smith and councillor Reed, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Well, Theresa's said much of what I feel. But I mean, it really is thin end of the wedge syndrome, isn't it? You know, you start off with something small and then you keep on pushing and add a bit on. And it's, it's a bit of a monster, isn't it? But as Theresa said, I don't know what grounds one could refuse it. The overlook, I don't think is going to be any worse from the balcony than it is at the moment. It's going to be moved further out. But actually, it wouldn't make a material difference, I don't think, with the screen added in. So I think reluctantly, I'd have to support it or not disagree with it, anyway. So I think reluctantly I'd have to support it, or not disagree with it, anyway.
Thank you, councillor Leaming, did you want to speak?
I'm councillor Reed first, I think, Chair.
Oh, councillor Reed, I didn't quite remember the name of the councillor.
That's all right, thank you.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a property that seems to have just gone mad. When you look at the block plan, it's just expanding down the property. I think there is a way, and on page one twenty of the South Downs National Local Plan, Development Management Policy, SD thirty one, Extensions to Dwellings and Provision of Anixes and Outbuildings, and it's number one B and the second part of C. The proposal respects the established character of the area, does it? Although form which will, that would be detrimental to the amenity of nearby residents.
Thank you, and shall we just put that to the officers for comment? As Reed has suggested, a reason for refusal. Charlotte, or?
Sorry, yeah, no, I'm here. My assessment is that it's not contrary to those policies, basically. So it's, the character's already established with the existing property, and it's just pulling it out slightly further. It's not out of keeping with the existing character of the property, so I base my assessment that it's in keeping with the policy.
Obviously, you're not satisfied with the answer, but that is the answer that the officers.
I think it's overdevelopment, full stop.
Okay. Vice Chair, who's next on the?
Councillor Leaming and councillor McLean.
Councillor Leaming?
Thank you. I'm afraid I do have to go along with the overdevelopment side of it, because I feel that this is completely shooting its way through planning. And to a certain extent, there's disregard for the ecology of the area, and I think that it has got far too large for the, and having a detrimental effect on the surrounding properties, and it's changed the whole scene of that particular area, so I think that we can think about refusing it on those grounds.
Do you have a policy that it contravenes?
Well, I would think I'd go along with what councillor Reed said, SD thirty one is the starting point, and also it's changing the whole character of the neighbourhood, and I've forgotten what the policy number is on that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McLean?
Both the previous councillors have said what I wanted to say, I'm just trying to come up with a policy reason.
Thank you.
Councillor Raphael, please, Chair.
Councillor Raphael?
Thank you, Chair, overdevelopment as far as I'm concerned, and I shall be voting against it.
Okay. Any further contributions to debate?
Just me, Chair, and I think, yes, it is overdevelopment, and I'm trying to wrap my brains to get the right policy, but in the meantime, I could give all sorts of sufficient grounds to refuse if I could, so I'm still, I'm just checking my policies before I finally make up my mind, Chair, sorry.
I think we've heard from everybody, have we, I think? Oh no, councillor Bentoe, but he might not want to speak in debate. So if there are no more contributions to debate?
Chair, councillor Bentoe's just come in.
Okay, councillor Bentoe?
Yeah, well, I feel that if somebody can come up with some good reason why we can turn it down, I'd be happy to turn it down. I'm just looking at the two statutory purposes of the SDNB designation are to conserve and enhance the natural beauty, wildlife and cultural heritage. This certainly doesn't enhance the natural beauty, but that's about is probably more in the actual South Downs policies, that I'm not aware of anything that I can come across. And I do resent this sort of continual enlargement, which we find in so many different places, several places in our, in our moors where houses get bigger and bigger, and are unable to stop them.
Thank you. Mrs. Pinnock, did you want to advise us in any way?
Yes, please, thank you, Chairman. I think what you've heard from your officers is that we acknowledge that it's a large addition, but what we are advising you is in design terms, it carries on the current theme, it's just extending the dwelling out to the rear, there are no visual impacts. I can't agree, you know, with, I accept there's probably incremental growth, but does that result in overdevelopment that's harmful? Is the assessment that you have to make, isn't it? And I can't see any planning reason, Chair, in terms of South Downs Policy, SD thirty one, that we could underhang a reason for refusal on. As councillor Reed said, SD thirty one one B probably is the closest, but that talks about the proposal respects the established character of the local area. Well, we have an existing dwelling sitting in this site that proposes to be extended in the same way, so I think that'd be really hard to demonstrate that there's been any sort of additional planning harm. And then the only other issue, I think, we looked at was ecology, but, you know, as we've explained to you, that there is any ecology that we believe you could refuse this proposal on, in terms of the work that's already happened. And I just think we would struggle, Chair, I mean, I'm happy to be directed by the committee in terms of how you wish to progress, but there are no policy reasons, in my view, that would satiate a reason for refusal, Chair.
Thank you for that advice, and so we will move towards the decision. I think, you know, the incremental growth concerned us, and the fact that it's just got so large, but if you look at the back, they're using the same materials, it just goes, Mrs. Pinnock, that's just going to be. Anyway, I don't want to have two goes at the, like, two by the cherry.
Could I have a second bite now, if I may, Chair, because you've had one?
Go on.
It's just very quick, it's just, it's just an observation that is colouring my thinking. We had an application just before lunch where someone was tearing down a garage and putting up another one. And we allowed that application, we've got this application where someone is adding to their dwelling, not really able to be viewed from the public domain. And I know which way I want to go, but I'm struggling to go that route.
I know.
Reasons I've just stated.
Yeah, I think.
I need some help.
Yeah. I think councillor McLean, we're all in, we're all coming from the same position, but we might all vote differently. Anyway, we will move to the vote, this application has been recommended for approval. And Dave, would you like to take us through the committee to see how they wish to vote?
Yes, I will, thank you, Chair. Councillor Clea?
Very reluctantly four.
Councillor Evans?
Well, I'm the same, I would rather say no, but I just can't find a material planning reason to say no, so, four.
Thank you again, councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, there aren't sound reasons, so I have to say four.
Thank you, councillor Leaming?
Extremely reluctantly four.
Thank you again, councillor McLean?
I'm going to abstain because of my feelings on it.
Thank you again, councillor Reed?
Against.
Councillor Raphael?
Against.
And councillor Bentoe? Councillor Bentoe?
Sorry, I said reluctant four without my microphone.
Sorry, I did miss that, excuse me. Yeah, so, Chair, that's five, four, two against and one abstention.
Right, I do hope that the applicant or agent is listening. Probably they actually think that this is enough extensions, but that doesn't mean that they can't put any more extensions applications in. So this application is approved. Now, committee, how do you feel about?
Chair?
Would you like a break?
Not particularly, but Chair, can I ask you a quick question? I noticed councillor Porter was appearing, flashing on and off through the meeting. Can you possibly, as Chair of this committee, ask her as head of the effectively enforcement to see what she can do on the subject of the outstanding issues here?
Yeah, I'd rather take that up privately with councillor Porter.
That's why I'm asking you to do it, I'm just asking you to do it, I'm asking you to do it now.
Yeah, I don't want to do it in a public session. But councillor Porter, I presume you're just here because you're interested in the planning committee's decisions? Is that correct? And you've got your TPO coming up, which is your report? Or has she gone? I think she might have gone.
I think she heard that enforcement and went.
It's twenty past three, or just after, do you want a break?
Could we take a ten minute break, I've got somebody who's just arrived, I need to see with.
Yes, okay, well, that answers that question. Let's have a ten minute break, so on the computer it says fifteen twenty one, so we'll have a ten minute break to fifteen thirty one, just after half past.
Go on.
Finish off the introduction, then I will go to the roll call. Coomfolly Cliff Way at Compton Down. Dave, would you like to do the roll call of the councillors present this afternoon?
Yes, of course, thank you again, Chair, councillor Clea?
Present.
Councillor Evans?
I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Present.
Councillor Leaming?
Don't forget, I'm standing down on this one, David, as I'm speaking.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Councillor McLean?
I'm present, thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Present.
Councillor Raphael?
Present.
And councillor Bentoe?
Present.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so we have the case officer, John Bartlett, here with us, who will give us a presentation, and then we'll move into the public speaking. Over to you, John.
Okay, thank you very much, Chair. So just to give you some background, to start with some background to the case. At the time, the TPO was served by the council, it received eleven letters of objection. The TPO was made after we received information that the, from Member of the Public, that the trees were under threat. Following an assessment that we made on the trees, a ten power assessment was made, that is widely used to assess trees for their TPO worthiness, and the TPO was made in November twenty twenty, and we are seeking confirmation of this TPO today. So to summarise the objections that we received, the two western, the main objections were that the two western red seeders are non-native, so should not be protected. Also that these trees do not contribute to the visual amenity or boreal character of the local area, and they are not noticed from the road, as there is relatively low footfall and not visually significant. And also that the trees are too large for locality and blocking out natural light. In response to those objections, government guidance allows local authorities to protect non-native trees as well as native trees, so long as the criteria with the government guidance is met. With the tree evaluation method, these trees met the scoring criteria for the TPO. And from going out, site visits, the trees appear to us to be far enough away from the property to not cause significant issues. And it does appear to be a garden that is large enough to accommodate these trees. And here are some photos of the trees. Firstly, the public view from Cliff Way, which is just near Littlecroft. This is a view from the rear garden of Coomfolly. And it can be seen that these trees are quite prominent features in the landscape here. This is again from Cliff Way of the two trees. And this is again from the rear garden of Coomfolly. The view there. A view from high, outside high down, also in Cliff Way, just behind the piers fee, an ash tree there in the foreground. And this is a more partial, partial view from Hurdle Way, but the trees can still be seen to some degree from that viewpoint. So just to go back to the government guidelines, we haven't received any a biological or technical reasons that would justify the removal of these trees. And it's the Secretary of State's view that the high, the immunity value of the tree, the stronger the reasons would have to be given for the, for consent to be granted for the removal. And so our recommendation is to confirm this TPO. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public speaking now, we have three objectors. Mr. and Mrs. Stevens, I think we've seen you already, good afternoon. And Jenny Livy? Good afternoon, Mrs. Livy.
Good afternoon, I said I would only speak if extra time was given. Mr. and Mrs. Stevens will need the full three minutes.
Yes, that's correct. So if you wanted to just be available to answer questions, which the committee might have afterwards, that would be fine. And if you find that the time that Mr. and Mrs. Stevens are using, is using, there is some extra time, that's fine, also if you want to speak. And so Mr. and Mrs. Stevens, you're there, aren't you? And those are your slides, are they? Mrs. Stevens, Mr. Stevens, time to unmute your microphone and put your camera back on? That's it, and you want to put your camera on? Yeah, okay.
Do you want to put the camera on? I think our camera is on, I'm not sure.
No, it's not. This is on, yeah.
It is on, yeah, okay.
And Mrs. Livy, do you want to unmute and be seen or not?
I'm quite happy about Mrs. Stevens gives her presentation.
Yeah, okay, fine. So, Mr. and Mrs. Stevens, when you start speaking, the clock will come on the screen, and you have three minutes. At the end of three minutes, we will remind you, and you may then, of course, finish your sentence, but if you could then stop. But if you finish before the end of the three minutes, it seems that Mrs. Livy would like to say a few words as well. And then afterwards, the councillors might want to ask you questions. So when you're ready, you have three minutes, and you'll see the clock come on the screen.
Thank you, Chairman. It was with total shock that we received provisional TPO on the nineteenth of November. We duly set about writing our letters of objection. We heard no more until the seventh of December, when we learnt from WCC correspondents to Nujector that the trees were under threat. This was the first we knew of it. We had to wait a full three calendar months from the date of the order before we gleaned the real. before we gleaned the real nature of the concern, that these two trees are purportedly under threat from development. We only made this startling, indeed preposterous discovery because we pressed to see the report of the council's arbicultural officer. It is regrettable that this assertion was not in the public domain much earlier because the twenty-eight days permitted for objections were effectively wasted. Objectors focused on why our two western redcedars were so significant when there are at least two hundred of them within a ten minute walk of our home. All this because we were unaware of the real reason for the order. We had been led to believe that it was about the trees themselves. In fact, they had been targeted as strategic players in a fictional threat from development. To cut to the chase, the claim of development made to the council is utterly false. No planning application to build in our garden has ever been submitted during the thirty-four years that we have lived at Coomfolly, nor will any such application ever be made during our lifetime. Why would we want to see all the diverse horticultural beauty we have created, including a wildflower meadow bulldozed, to stare in our declining years of bricks and mortar when we are fortunate in being financially secure? The two tree officers who were given free rein to our garden apparently did not notice the fine specimen trees we have carefully nurtured. Clearly, they did not believe they were under threat. For the sake of clarity, we have not asked to fell the two trees in question, but to be allowed to manage them with specialist advice as the devoted garden custodians we are, of which you have ample proof. We warmly commend the council's commitment to protecting the identity of a member of the public when a sensitive matter is reported. However, concomitant with this principle must go a duty on the part of the council to scrutinize claims rigorously and to abandon those that are clearly false. Not to do so is to sponsor a charter for malicious reporting, which we are sure the council, with its responsibility to all its selectors, would wish to avoid. In common with our objectors and as councillors' taxpayers, we are deeply perturbed about the waste of the council's time and resources as cases entailed, the manner in which this process has been prosecuted and the abuse of TPO due procedures by a malicious party. We have been deeply hurt to be the victims of an unscrupulous telephone call and a totally unfounded assertion. We have suffered for three months. Our sincere hope now is that we can all draw a line under this unfortunate saga and that we can strive together to prevent its recurrence.
Thank you. Mrs. Stevens, thank you very much. Mr. Stevens has used all of the three minutes, so there's no time for you, Mrs. Livy. But if you want to answer any questions, could you register? That is fine. Councillor, any questions for Mrs. Stevens?
Yes, could I just ask her about the fact that there is a deciduous tree around? How much does the view of that?
Three minutes, just answering questions, that is your role now. Chair, any questions for the objections?
No, could I just, apart from me, Mrs. Stevens, good afternoon?
Good afternoon.
May I ask you? You do not wish to have the trees felled, do you? Am I correct?
The, we have never asked for these trees to be felled, although references made to that in Mr. Bartlett's report. To be absolutely clear, what we are asking for is to be left to manage our trees, every tree in our garden independently, with specialist advice. You would have seen in the Arbiculturalist Report that we forwarded to each of you that these trees are at the moment only about half of their potential growth, only about half. So what we will do is what we've done with all of the other trees in our garden. We will take specialist advice. We have already had the lower part, sorry, lifted in order to get more light to the trees because they were being stifled by lack of light. We will take advice and as time goes by, we will obviously respond to advice and only specialist advice of the highest calibre. On our slides, we showed the beech tree in our front garden. We have spent well over three thousand pounds over the years to look after that tree. That's why it is as beautiful as it is. Similarly, the silver birch, the sycamore, all of the fine specimen trees in our garden. We are not tree killers. We are here to preserve our garden, but we do also need to bear in mind that trees must be managed because if they are not effectively managed, they will stifle the growth of other trees and that does not promote biodiversity.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens, it's appreciated.
Mrs. Stevens, could I just ask a question?
Yes, I will.
What the outcome of the councillor's vote will be. But if the TPO is reviewed or confirmed, do you do understand that that doesn't mean you can't do anything with it?
I understand that, I understand that perfectly. I have always understood that. The point at issue here relates to the point that I made in the first three of why, one of the three reasons why we've been perturbed the way this case has been raised. And that relates to the council's time and resources. So every time that we apply for work to be done on the tree, not only does that waste your time, well, the council's time, and indeed financial implications, when we are perfectly capable of managing this tree on our own. We do not think that that is a correct justification. We're all aware that councils are finding life difficult financially, not because of your, any fault of yours, but because of government cutbacks. So we don't want to waste your time. There are much better ways for you and your councillors to involve your time. Thank you.
And I wanted to add, obviously, this has just come to the committee which I chair, so I've had nothing to do with the back. But you do understand, it's not a personal attack on you or the way that you manage your garden. You do understand that.
I do understand that perfectly, but with respect, Chairman, we, our garden, aside from our grandchildren, is the most important thing in our lives. And it's very difficult not to feel that it isn't a time when the real reason for it is not true.
Okay, I do understand that. I came round and we looked at it from outside. It's a lovely garden.
Thank you.
Appreciated all the spring flowers that you've had at the front. So we do have more puppet speakers. We have all three ward.
Chair, I have.
Councillor McLean has.
Councillor McLean, you want to ask a question?
Yes, I do. Could I just ask a question, if I may, of Jenny Livy? Jenny Livy, if I may, because she didn't, I think she wanted to try and make a point, but there was no time available to do it. Is there anything that Jenny could add to this argument? Thank you. Or debate?
Mrs. Livy?
Thank you. I would like to add that the photographs taken in the report were taken when the trees, they were deciduous trees which were not in leaf. If those photographs have been taken in the next month or so and the trees are in leaf, you will find that most of the view of those trees have been blunted because they're deciduous trees, take them over. The other point that I'd like to make is that Hurdle Way is not a public road. There's very few people go down. According to the tree officer's report, sixty people. Did you ask them if they'd noticed the trees at all? And if they haven't, then there's no public amenity.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Just stated that at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Vice Chair, were there any more questions for Mr. and Mrs. Stevens or Miss Livy?
No, Chair, not at this present.
So we now move on to the next puppet speaker. So thank you, Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you.
Sound disturbance, so if you could turn your microphone off on your camera, I think. So we now have the three ward councillors who wish to speak and it's up to them which order they want to speak in. They all have five minutes. I don't know whether they are all going to take the five minutes and whether it would be possible to not repeat something that one of your ward councillors has said. But I don't want to stifle democracy, so we're in your hands. So who's going first?
Would Hannah like to go first?
Yes, I'd happily go first, yeah.
And then, well, then you can decide who goes next. So, good afternoon, councillor Williams.
Good afternoon.
When you're ready, you have minutes and you'll see the clock comes on the screen.
Perfect, thank you. Having had a look at the sort of TPO and the report, there looks like there are four key arguments for which he says there should be a permanent TPO. The first, that the trees are under threat from development. It would be interesting to see the evidence, as the officers have not provided that in their report. There are no planning applications for development. Instead, the owners have sought in the past to extend and future-proof their home. This has been done to make their home comfortable so they can live it in their older years. So why, when they have spent so much time and money to make this their forever home, would they suddenly rush to develop it? The simple answer is they wouldn't. The property is not in immediate danger of development and therefore there is no need to protect these trees. Instead, we have homeowners who have lived in their home for over thirty years and their garden is their life. They have spent money and time making it into a sanctuary. And as any gardener who has large trees know, you have to maintain them and keep them healthy and make sure that they work in your garden. These western redcedars are already twenty feet high and the Stevens have had the canopy raised and use locally registered arbicultural specialists. Why do this if you want to make a quick buck and self-development? The answer is they would not. On another point, why is it so important to protect these trees from development? What makes these ones special when there are dozens of these trees within that road? I know that there are rules, but we need to make sure if we apply them, we do them in a consistent way. Otherwise, problems will arise. The second point is that they have good visibility from the public highway and therefore a public amenity. I live locally and like many others, I run or walk around Compton Down regularly. However, very few people use Cliffway as a route to walk or run on and it is mainly used by those who live there for access. So I would question, is that a visual public amenity? And if they are, then why are the other western redcedars not important? Why is this house that has recently been put on the market with plenty of land covered in trees not got TPOs on it? They are more visible from the road and potentially a more developmental threat. The third point is the removal of these trees would have a significant and negative impact on the local environment. I would ask why? What public enjoyment is gained from these trees over any others? What evidence do you have that they are under threat? To say something is true without evidence is not a fact. Looking at the tree officer's report, nothing is cited that seems to require these trees having a TPO on them. We as a council need to be careful to act appropriately in matters of planning. Number four, there is no arbicultural reason or justification for the felling of these trees. At the risk of repeating myself, there is no desire from the homeowners to fell the trees just to maintain them and there is no evidence to suggest that if the TPO is removed, that they will fell them. They have had thirty years to cut these trees down and numerous offers from developers. Why would they rush to develop now? As a former trustee of a woodland charity, I understand the importance of tree maintenance and the difficulty TPOs put on doing this. I would ask, is there any evidence of arbicultural neglect? Or are the guardians of these trees maintaining them to the high standards as they do with every other tree on their land? Having visited the garden, I can safely say these trees are well maintained and in my opinion will continue to be so. So why make it harder and more cumbersome for them to do something they are already doing? The fifth point, the tempo. The score meets the threshold of sixteen, which means that it warrants a TPO. I would ask, what makes these trees so important? And we need to be careful that we are not applying rules for the sake of doing so. If there is no threat, sorry, lost my page. And it's just about meets a criteria. It does not seem an overwhelming reason to make a TPO permanent when we have the owners who look after them to a high standard. Where, you know, what is the point in doing something just because it's scraped through? Lastly, I would like to address the assertions that under the council's plan, tackling the environment and living well. As an ardent environmentalist, I believe in tackling the climate emergency. But to say that these two western cedars, which are not under threat, are providing any more biodiversity than the two next door seems a big jump. We need to either protect every tree with TPOs or only do it when it's necessary. As to living well, I would also argue the point that these trees are key to the mental health of the local area is a bit of a stretch. They are visible if you look at them, or sorry, if you look for them because they are set behind the house with a more prominent tree in the front garden. Putting a TPO on these trees will not help the people of Winchester live well. In fact, quite conversely, could be argued for the homeowners who have found this whole situation very harrowing. Therefore, I would object to this TPO being made permanent. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williams. There could be questions for you?
Okay.
Just wait and see if the Vice Chair has got any questions registered.
No, Chair, I've just checked, nothing for councillor Williams.
No, so thank you very much for coming along and.
Thank you.
I know you will stay with us.
I will.
So if you'd like to mute your microphone and, yeah, thank you. So who's going next?
Would councillor Bell like to go next?
Oh, after you, Brian.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Laming, you know.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be short and sweet because councillor Williams has said most of what I wanted to say. I find it quite strange that only these two trees have been reported to put a TPO on in this garden. They are probably the two least significant trees in the garden. On the front garden, you've got a very significant beech tree, which adds a great deal to the local area. Back garden, you've got specimen trees which are looked after in a really well-run garden with a lot of biodiversity and they have created a really nice garden. The threat of development, I find very strange because the back garden is more or less landlocked. So where would that threat come from? I don't mind saying it, but I wonder what's going on in that neighbourhood with somebody reporting it. I don't think that these trees actually meet the threshold because they're only just borderline, so it's open to dispute. And I would ask the council, the committee, not to recommend this TPO. And that's all I have to say on this.
Thank you very much, councillor Laming, for keeping it shorter. There could be questions for you.
No, Chair, no questions for councillor Laming.
No, okay, thank you, thank you councillor Laming. And so councillor Bell, it's over to you. You have five minutes when you're ready.
Thank you. And I shouldn't take, can you hear me? Yes?
You have five minutes.
Shouldn't take that because, as I say, or as Brian said, councillor Williams has said much of the, most of us would say, and I won't repeat it. I first, I first heard about this TPO several weeks ago directly from Mrs. Stevens. She was very distressed. And I tried to reassure her then that you can still do work on a tree with a TPO, et cetera. And anyway, it may not be confirmed and would therefore expire. As the tree team know, Mr. Gerdler, Mr. Bartlett and others, I've often asked for a TPO in the past or bemoaned the fact that a TPO was not placed in time where trees were later felled by, or even before we got there, by a developer. But I've also been involved where a TPO was needed only temporarily. Councillor Williams mentioned Sparagh Grove and Oakwood Cops. A woodland TPO was placed on that woodland area, but only until the woodland management plan was in place and then lifted. And again, Mr. Gerdler may remember a particular case where a TPO was placed on a tree in a residential garden in a conservation area. It was a diodara. If it grew to its full height and its full width at the bottom, it would have taken over the whole garden. He agreed with me at the time that that should be not confirmed and in fact allowed to expire. I think we all know how much angst TPOs can cause, even though we as councillors or the tree team may not understand quite why that might be. But the committee have received a flood of letters from neighbours to this property, all confirming how well the garden is managed by the Stevens, including the trees front and back, and expressing their trust in the Stevens for their good management going forward with no threat of development or felling. I don't know why a request was made by an undisclosed party for this TPO. I do understand that the trees team would respond by making the order. But I think it's unnecessary in this case and so I would ask the committee not to confirm the order and therefore to allow it to expire. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being so concise. Any questions for Councilwoman Bell?
Nothing indicated, Chair, no. No question.
No questions, thank you, Councilwoman Bell. Thank you for coming along and speaking today. John, is there anything that you want to pick up from what you heard from the public speakers?
Yes, certainly. So in terms of the evidence, we had a... I mean, Ivan might want to speak on this one, on this bit. Only the evidence.
I'm so sorry, I didn't quite catch that. What was the last thing? Oh, Mr Girdler, okay. I think we just thought we'd bring Mr Girdler in, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, he's the head of the team.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mr Girdler.
Good afternoon, committee, thank you. It's just a thing that, to reassure, you know, we get lots and lots of requests for TPOs and we get lots to tip off some developments. So, you know, in a situation like this, we have to take things seriously that, you know, the first thing was that come out the trees are going to be felled. So that was the sort of trigger for making a visit to do the tempo and to look at the trees, which kicks in, as you know, the government legislation and Secretary of State is that, you know, the trees are under threat, that's one trigger for them. And secondly, the second trigger is the amenity value. Now, the legislation is quite sort of clear that the trees need to be in public view or parts of the trees, so both of it. If you've got a small part of the tree in public view, if you've got a tree full public view, the legislation still ticks a box for that. So, you know, obviously, we received two phone calls and an email, you know, and chasing, what have you done about this? What have you done about this? You know, when are you going to TPO these trees? Now, at the time, it was COVID, so it did take a few days to get there, and, you know, we've got it sorted out, so we've got the TPO on the tree. So that's the sort of story so far, that's, you know, that's how it came about, and all the other things that come out of it since. But what I would say is that, you know, this is the normal thing, is that even like you talked about the other conifers on that estate, on that area, is if they were under threat, the same principle we applied, that we would go out and we'd have a look, we'd do a tempo assessment, we'd look at, you know, the amenity value of the trees, and we would then take a view on, you know, what's going on there. But obviously, we don't know to start what is going on. But the main point is that, you know, the exact words were the trees are going to be felled, which is the trigger point for us to act, to do something, because, you know, once they've been felled, it's too late. So we have to do something, you know, to assess the situation. That's what's happened here.
Thank you. So, I mean, it's quite obvious that Mrs Stevens has got very upset about it, and I'm so sorry about that. But it's quite obvious that they, Mr and Mrs Stevens, have no intention of felling these trees. And so that's what she says, and I believe her. But they do tick a box nationally because of their contribution to the area, you're saying. So they're worthy of a TPO regardless of whether they're under threat or not.
Yeah. Well, the only thing you've got to bear in mind is in future years to come, you know, that Mr and Mrs Stevens might move on in years to come, we don't know. A new owner might come in and say, well, I don't like them trees, I'm going to cut them down, and there's no control. So, you know, it's not just about now, it's looking to the future, as all tree people do, look to the future to see what's going to be there, you know. And just picking up to, the reason we didn't look at the other trees in the garden because we weren't directed to when we visited, we specifically directed to them two trees, and that's what we concerned, because this is what this is about, two trees, not the other tree in the garden.
But what I'm trying to get at is that the trees are worthy of TPOs in the right eye, not because somebody who is anonymous to all of us has said, oh, I think that Mr and Mrs Stevens are going to fall it, which they're not...
No, the tree, you know, basically is, it's not a thing against the tree owner or anything or anybody, it's a fact. It's that, you know, the government, the legislation says what it says, they're the true trigger points. If you weren't minded to TPO the trees, why wouldn't you? Because both trigger points have been kicked in, both, you know. So, you know, that is the main thing for the Secretary, that is the two main things with TPO and the trees. Now, both of them targets have been hit. So if you're minded not to confirm the TPO, why would you not? Because you were following government guidance.
And what about the criticism that we're wasting the council's time and money?
We are adequately resourced now, we're up to full staff. You know, we have been down on staff in the past, we are here to provide a service, we provide that service of TPOs, monitoring tree works, and also to bring things to committee and dealing with legal aspects. So, you know, the service is part of the planning development side of the council, the local planning authority, there are resources in place, there are staff in place at the moment to continue to do this work. And obviously, you know, TPOs are one of our main issues that we have to deal with, you know, main tasks which are done in the past. Unfortunately, we've been lost staff, we took longer to respond, but in this case we responded straight away and it was sorted out, and at the moment we're staffed enough to do that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to the general report, so...
I heard...
Wanting to speak. So I'll go to the... And then I'll come back to you, but can I come back to you in a minute?
No, can I just say, Councilwoman Reed has had to leave the meeting. Councilwoman Reed has left the meeting.
Okay. So Dave has made a note of that, Dave, haven't you?
Yes, that's right, Chair, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, sorry to interrupt you, Vice Chair. So we're going to go on to the report because we were straying into that, and I see that Councilwoman McLean wants to ask a question. And it could be that we'll have Ivan back as the expert or the case officer, John Bartlett. Councilwoman McLean.
Thank you. If I could ask a question of Ivan Girdler, if I may.
Yeah. Back on.
Nice to see you looking well.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much.
Stay safe.
Yes.
We, if we accept two things, one is this was triggered by effectively an anonymous phone call and email.
Yep.
Saying two trees were going to be cut down, which is, as we've seen, patently wasn't going to happen. So the first trigger point was actually based on, I say false, it's the wrong word, was based on false information. The second trigger point is obviously the tree is viewed as an amenity and visible from the highway. As was pointed out by Jenny Livy, the... Once the deciduous trees had come into leaf, those trees would hardly be visible at all. One of the photographs appears to be taken from someone's garden rather than from the public highway. So how would the... If I choose to vote against it, it'll be on the first point, but how does the second point stand up when it's not that visible and there are many others like it? Factually.
Yeah. We walked, when we looked at this TPO to see, you know, how visible the trees are, the trees from the side, so you've got long-distance views of the trees around the side of the road, the road goes around like a big U shape. And if you can visualize the houses at the front of the U, so you can see each tree in front, you can see through. But as you go around the side and down the road, it is quite visible, there's no deciduous trees, you can see the trees between the houses as a backdrop. So they are publicly visible from the highway. And the point worth noting there is that me and John was there, was probably there probably for 20 minutes, half an hour, probably three, four couples went past, so it's sort of fairly, you know, they were walkers, so there are people up and down the road, you can see it, you know, so it has got the public amenity there.
Thank you, I think, I'm still trying to get my head around this one, I'm struggling a bit. Thanks, Ivan.
Okay.
Any more questions, Vice Chair? On the report?
No, no, no chair, we're fine, thank you.
Sorry, I was just looking to see whether I had another question, but no, I don't. So we are in then to debate. Shall I go first, because no one seems to be rushing? I have visited the site, and what Ivan has just said is true. I mean, I don't expect it not to be true, but if you look at the map on page 154, there is a gap next to the main house of Coonfolly, and you can see the trees there. And even though they're not native trees, they are lovely trees, and obviously, it wasn't when the other trees were in leaf. Then, as you go around the corner, you can see the trees all the time. And then, of course, you get round to outside Hydham Cottage, and you can see them there. So there's no doubt in my mind that they are two very attractive trees and do add a lot of visual amenity to the area. And again, we saw lots of walkers when we were there, it was a nice day, but there were people just walking around. I mean, people had been like cage lions a bit, but, you know, there were a lot of people who could see the trees. I am so sorry that this TPO has upset the Stevens family. We have had an enormous amount of objections to the council placing this TPO potentially, and I'm so sorry because it isn't personal. It is, as I tried to explain to Mrs Stevens, it is the trees, and none of us are going to live forever. And as Ivan has explained, this was to protect the trees for the future. And obviously, they're not going to be developed, this area is not going to be developed. One could, with a planning eye, look at that map and think, oh, yes, there is a building plot at the back, and yes, those trees will be in the way. But that isn't what's going to happen, I understand that, and their garden is beautiful. And I thought it was such a lovely statement that Mrs Stevens said that the garden came second after their grandchildren in importance in their lives, and you can see that. But I don't think placing a TPO on it in any way affects the quality of life. All it does is protects the tree for the future. They are devoted gardeners. I think the idea that someone has rung in and said, oh, it's going to be developed is a red herring here, that's why the team went out and had a look. But it's obviously not going to be the case. And as is, in my opinion, the fact that there are lots of other trees in the area that should be TPO'd as well. And as Ivan said, if they were under threat, and we understand that these two trees are not under threat, they would have TPOs on as well. And we've heard in the report that the fact that they're not native trees attracts other sort of biodiversity, other species. And I do feel sorry about the amount of distress really that this has caused, but I don't see that a reason for not confirming the TPO. Because if you want any works done on it, then you can apply to the council, to have those works done. You can use whichever contractor you want, high-quality contractor, doesn't have to be anyone associated with the council. So, yeah, I feel that this TPO should be renewed, but not because I think Mr and Mrs Stevens are about to tear them down. And that's my view. Any more contributions to debate?
Yes, Chair, we have Councilor Gordon Smith and Councilor McLean, thank you.
Councilor Gordon Smith?
Yes, dear me, I have a rather contradictory point of view. I think these trees are monsters, and you wait another 30 years and it would be very difficult to take it down, it'll be too big. I mean, Mrs Stevenson has a lovely and a pretty large garden, but I think they will be out of scale there. You need to have like a big Victorian parkland to really see them. And I also think that they are an alien species, certainly in the English, British landscape, and I can't see any good reason to put a TPO on it. They're not of great ecological value, and birds and things live in them, but they take so much from the soil, it's very difficult to get anything else to grow around it. In North America, in our natural habitat, you have related species, shrub species and so on, but they don't exist in this country. So I can't see any good reason to go through all this administrative palaver for something which is quite frankly a menace.
Thank you. Councilwoman McLean?
Thank you, Chair. That was very, very well put, finishing up with a menace. I think, Chair, you mentioned a red herring. I don't think it is a red herring, I think that what's gone on has been very offensive to the owners of the property and the owners of the trees, which I think is dreadfully unfair. The main reason for putting a TPO on it, which was they were going to be cut down, is obviously not the case. As we've heard very, very passionately, is not the case. What the TPO will do is give costs that are unnecessary. Every time they have to apply for work on the trees, there are costs involved in it, which without the TPO, they could just get on and do the work to manage those trees properly. So I don't believe there's a red herring, I believe there's some nastiness afoot here. I don't believe there is, and I hate to disagree with Ivan, because Ivan and I always think the same way, but this is one I just can't agree with. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. It's a red herring because it's not true, Councilwoman McLean, in my view. Any more?
We're all entitled to those.
Yes, Chair, Councilor Bento.
Councilor Bento?
Yeah. Well, my opinion is that Ivan and his team have acted in the proper way and the circumstances. But I feel that, having seen the garden and met Mr and Mrs Stevens, they should realize that these are people who absolutely love their garden, they're not going to do any damage to the trees. And as Councilwoman McLean just said, unnecessary expense for them to apply, you know, go through TPO procedures every time they want to do something to the trees, which they want to look after. So I feel the best solution is not to renew the TPO, but obviously, the local councillors can keep an eye on what happens within the property, and should, you know, any change of owners take place, then maybe it would be a very good idea to put TPO on the whole garden, because obviously it's a very lovely garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Yes, me, me please, Chair, if I may. First of all, may I also say that I'm sorry that Mrs Stevens and Mr Stevens have been so upset over this issue. It's a shame, and all this has come about, may I say, based on false information by somebody ringing up Winchester Council and sending an email. But Ivan and Mr Bartlett, they went out, they looked at it, I've seen them, I think they're lovely trees, I know they're big, but they're lovely and I like them. And Mr and Mrs Stevens, as long as you tend that garden, I am sure you will take great care of them, and as you do in your beautiful garden, because I had a quick look when I was out there. But if something happened, Mrs Stevens, and you weren't there, those trees are still protected, and I think you probably would be pleased with that. So I'm sorry, but I do agree that now Mr Girdler and Mr Bartlett have seen them, that the TPOs should stay. Thank you.
Any more contributions to debate? Vice Chair?
I've just checked, no more, thank you.
So I think we're moving now to the vote. This TPO has been recommended to be confirmed, the TPO 2288. And pass over to Dave to do the roll call to see whether people are for or against or abstain.
Yes, thank you, Chair, just to explain that Councilwoman Leaming and Councilwoman Reed will not be taking part in this vote. So can I start then, please, with Councilwoman McLean?
So can I start then please with councillor Clever?
Yes, for.
Councillor Revens?
For.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Against.
Councillor McLean?
Against.
Councillor Raphael?
Against.
And councillor Bento?
Against.
So that's two for, four against, and then there's two members not taking part in this vote, Chair.
Thank you, sir. That TPO is not confirmed. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to the last item of business on our agenda, which is item 14, the planning appeals. Mrs Binnick, this is your paper. Do you want to, I don't wish to discuss any individual ones, except perhaps one. But do you want to point out any lessons that we can learn? It's only a quarter report. You're muted, Julie.
Apologies for the delay, Chair. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. I seem to have dropped out of the meeting on my team. So I've just hit back in. I could hear, I was in the room obviously, so I could hear on Dave's. Yeah, as you said, it's my report. But I would just like to point out an error actually on page 171, paragraph 11.1. It correctly says that there are 11 appeals in that quarter, 54% allowed, 37% dismissed. And then we had one split decision. Now, I always count a split decision as just in terms of the percentages because we can't issue split decisions. So we would have had to refuse that proposal. Inspector obviously agreed with that point. So by my percentages, it's still a lower quarter than normal at 54% were allowed, so more than half, and 46% dismissed or this part split decision. There's an error on the next bit where it says of these, and that's wrong. What I would like to say to members and you'll see it in the table is that four of those appeals had a cost claim refused. And one of them, a cost claim was allowed, so not four, as the paper says. I think it's just got transposed in the report.
So the, the, the numbers have got reversed round. So the first number is four and the second number should be one.
Yes, yes.
Is better looking for the council.
Yes, yes, it is, Chair, yeah, definitely. I think it's just, as you said, it's got transposed. But there wasn't anything particular I wanted to pick out per se, Chair, other than I'm happy to answer any questions. I mean, I think one of the things I was thinking about when I was looking at this yesterday, members will know and I, I know I tell you this regularly, is that, you know, our, our own local performance indicators is that we aim to win about 70%, you know, you do accept that, you know, appellants just won't always necessarily agree, although there, and there'll be a planning balance sometimes. Obviously we have to take that planning balance. What I've noticed in the last two quarters is actually inspectors are being quite, we're saying, use the word generous. Actually, we've lost a few more appeals than normal. I think that's because there's perhaps a different measure coming through from the planning inspector and we'll monitor that. It's just really important that we can substantiate planning reasons for refusal when we do refuse a proposal. But I think the, the success with defending costs indicates that we've put up a good argument, even though inspectors didn't necessarily agree with our case, Chair. Nationally, the planning inspector don't measure appeals in this way. They measure them as a percentage of your whole. And if you, you're very underperforming, which is classed as about 10%, then, you know, the planning inspector may well take over the planning service. So that would be quite a poor measure for us as a council. We're at 0.9%, so less than 1% on our non-majors and just 2% on majors. So I'm quite comfortable with the national key performance indicators that were on track, Chair. Obviously, we just want to monitor this success rate at appeal in the next couple of quarters. And I'm happy to answer any questions on any individual appeals quoted in the paper.
Chair, I've got councillor Reed would like to ask a question.
Right. Before we, I, I just wanted to point out to councillors, I'm sure you've read it, that Brown Eaves, which was an application which we all found quite, I don't know what the word is really, but we had a very strong opinion on and we've lost that and we also lost costs as well. So that was, and it wasn't, they were quite high costs, weren't they, Julie, without revealing publicly what they were? You're muted now, Julie.
Sorry, that's my mistake, Chair. Dave's managing the speaker for me. Yeah, they were reasonably high. They were the appellant's agent's costs that we had to bear in that respect. Obviously, they were professional costs for bringing the whole appeal. So we had to bear the cost of that whole appeal process there because the inspector felt that we couldn't substantiate our reasons for refusal.
Okay. And I remember the agent quite well. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Julie. On number two, this was the split decision. Split decisions are dreadful in a sense because we don't get that option. What, can we just inquire as to which bits went where? Which bit was the cost and which was, no, sorry, not cost, dismissed? And which part was allowed? Try to understand the, the thought behind them.
Chairman, I don't have that to hand and I, I don't want to drop Nick Parker in it, but he is here with us and I don't know if that's something he would recall.
Nick?
Perhaps he will.
Yeah, sorry. I also unfortunately don't have that information directly to hand, but we can obviously inform councillor Reed post-meeting of that split.
Yeah.
If that's all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do the appeal decision, Chair, couldn't we?
Yeah, the other one is item nine, which I think you've referred to with regard to the appellant's costs. What was again the argument that we got wrong, basically? Can we just have a rundown on that?
Help you on that one more, just from my memory, Chair. It was about the use of an outbuilding as ancillary accommodation. And I think, you know, members may, it was quite a difficult discussion at the time of that meeting, where your officers had recommended approval because we thought the conditions that we proposed to you were appropriate in that case. But I think, you know, understanding the history of that, members felt that that wasn't strong enough. But actually, an appeal inspector, you know, substantiated that and said that, you know, with those controls, it was appropriate. And that the proposal should have been approved. So that was why we lost the order of cost, Chair.
Yeah. Thank you, Julie. Yeah, if it's possible to get item number two, some detail on that, I'd be grateful.
Will do.
With Brown Eaves, councillor Reed, if you remember, started off looking like two bunkers. And then they turned out all the, the two doors and two sets of this and that. And then it turned into just an ancillary use of hobby room and whatever. And then it ended up as accommodation for
Oh, it was that one?
Two members of the family.
It was that one. Ah, right.
Christmas broken leg, I think.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
I think one of them was an elderly relative. And I can never forget councillor McLean's description of the elderly relative coming up the garden in her slippers to, you know, to the main house. But anyway, that's what it was. And obviously the inspector didn't agree with us. So lesson learned there. Anything else?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor McLean and councillor Bento.
Councillor Say?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Julie, number one on the list, use of land for stationing caravans for residential purposes. Was that as a caravan park or was it a travel community caravan?
It isn't my ward.
Right, go on.
Oh, go on. That is not the great.
I don't know what to say really. I don't.
Well, if you don't want to, don't have to.
But I think there was a lot of illegal development. I don't know if Nick wants to, he's gone, has he? There was a lot of illegal, I think the parish council were disappointed by that decision. And there were a lot of illegal creep there of residential caravans.
Where are, may I ask, was our enforcement team involved in that at any point? Tried for the planning application?
I think so.
Because we've got the same thing going on at Derry at the moment where we've got this creep and we're still waiting.
Ward councillors and the parish council were just, were surprised at the inspector's decision. And that probably indicates what Julie was telling us, that they seem to be a little bit more lenient, is the word, towards.
And I think the final part of that is, has that made, with the, with the plan coming up, has that made a very big difference to the allocation we have to find within the plan?
Well, it's all just caravans, so.
Yeah, but we have to find plots, don't we? We've been told we've got to find sites to travel. If this is having given planning permission, does that?
I don't think it, well, I don't think so.
So I think, Chairman, what, what we, what we need to do now, Chairman, for the local plan, which is quite separate to this appeal decision, is look at what our future demands will be for an additional five years. So the local plan period will take us 20, I'm sorry, I can't remember if it's 2031 or 36, Chair, but we're obviously planning for another five years on the current plan period. And what we need to do then is we'll need to reach out and identify what our housing need is. We'll be given a, a housing figure from the government. We'll also need to identify what our gypsy and traveller and travelling show people need is. And then we can plan for that in the next plan period. And we also need to plan for students, for elderly, special care. So we need to provide for that whole range of, of housing need. And that's what the next local plan will look to do for our next five year plan period moving forward, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Bento?
Yeah, just going back to number two, because that is in my ward. And Julie will know this one has been going on for years, on and off. It's been at various stages, all sorts of problems. And I have tried to keep up to date with things, but it's been very difficult because the officers in charge seem to change and then, yeah, I just seem to get fobbed off a lot of the time and I'm not really finding out what's going on. So I'd be grateful, Julie. I've had an email, I think last week, telling me somebody else is going to be looking at it. But I think it does need, you know, sort of constant, constant looking at this one. And it does cause annoyance to a few, not that many nearby neighbours, but there are a few who do get disturbed by it.
Inspector's decisions are on the web, aren't they, Julie?
That's right, Chair. They will go on the relevant case number. I have since, Chairman, found the planning decision, the appeal decision for High Ridge Farm. And what it was, was the appeal, I can read it to you, I've got it in front of me now. The appeal was dismissed insofar as it relates to the installation of yard lighting and the change of redundant agricultural buildings to workshop for the reduction of wood products. But it was allowed insofar as it relates to the change of use of the agricultural land to extend the existing timber yard for timber storage and repositioning and design of the service roads to serve the retail outlet granted by an earlier permission. It was also granted permission for the change of use of agricultural land to extend the timber yard for timber storage. Well, that's a repeat, that is, that's in the, he's repeated that twice. So that was the split on that decision, Chair. And I'm happy to circulate that to anyone that would like to see it. But as you said, it does go on our website and is circulated, I thought, to the ward members at the time of decision.
I did, did have a copy of it, Julie, I did.
Thank you for that.
Back some time.
Relieved that.
Complaint since then about the lights. And so, you know, it sort of rolls on.
I, I did notice, and I was looking from an analytical point of view, that a lot of these are in the southern parishes. That's just by chance, is it?
I think, Chairman, the character of southern parishes is slightly different, you know, in terms of land holdings, the size of those holdings. What, what, from my experience, what I found in, in the northern parishes is more major landholders with tenant farmers or, or control of that land, whereas, you know, the southern parishes, not routinely, but it's made up of smaller clusters of units. So I think, you know, probably find more of that smaller piecemeal type operations, let's say.
Okay, so have we finished today?
Thank you, Chair.
I don't have, I don't have any more, Chair.
No, well, thank you very much, Vice Chair, for being Vice Chair today.
Thank you, Chair, for being Chair today.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chair?
Those of us who were at council, we were all at council.